Madam Secretary, will you please take the roll?
Alderman Anderson. Alderman Beer. Alderman Casey.
Here.
Alderman Fontana. Alderman Gurman. Alderman Genitasio. Alderman Golden. Alderman Hardeman. Alderman Kubek. Alderman Shaw. Alderman Smith. Alderman Stanford.
Here.
Alderman Vecarelli. Alderman Vitro.
Here.
Alderman Vitale.
We have eleven present. We do have a quorum. At this point, the first department organization on our agenda is going to be... Probate Court, page twenty-six. Good evening.
Hello, everyone. I'm Judge Beverly Strike Cofalas, the judge of probate for the Milford Orange Probate Court. The budget that I am presenting this year is actually a reduction by five hundred and eighteen dollars from the previous year, and that reflects a reduction in the copier lease. In addition, all of the other budgetary requests are flat funding. In fact, the probate court has been successful, frankly, probably just about in every year since I've been judge in staying under budget. My staff is very diligent in reusing and recycling and inheriting leftovers from other offices that aren't used, including pens, paper, and folders. So I think that it's not only important for our community to be recycling and reusing, but it also certainly helps our taxpayers, and we're proud to be able to assist in that respect. I'm happy to answer any specific questions anyone may have.
Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Cheerthrew. Good evening, Judge Beverly. How are you?
I'm well. How are you?
Could you just tell me what the proportion of the budget is orange? And is it equal?
No.
Or how does it work?
By statute, the shared budget is based on the population of each community. So for Milford and Orange, it's a seventy-five, twenty-five split. So the budget you see here is seventy-five percent of the total budget for the probate court. Based on the approval by this board, the equivalent twenty-five percent of the total is then submitted to the town of Orange, and they remit... I think twice a year, they submit an actual check to the city of Milford to pay their share.
It's literally seventy-five, twenty-five.
Yes, literally, as based on per capita.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions for Alderman Kubek?
I don't have any questions. I just want to thank you for coming in under budget, and it's really refreshing to see the first person up here come in and say, "We actually spent less than last year." Thank you.
Well, thank you. I have a modest budget, and certainly my constraints are different than other departments, but thank you. Nothing else?
Anyone else have any questions for probate?
Thank you for your time and the opportunity to be here.
Next account on the budget would be...is going to be Milford Prevention Council, account number four-one-two-two, page seventeen. I just switched them.
Thank you. May I just approach the chairman to...I have some things just to pass out? Thank you.
You may proceed.
Thank you. My name is Wendy Givens. I'm the executive director of the Milford Prevention Council. I just want to thank the Board of Aldermen. This is my first time present at a budget hearing, so be kind, I guess. That's why I passed out some information, just so you would be familiar with the Milford Prevention Council. Our mission is to reduce underage drinking and substance abuse here within the Milford community. In the last three years, we have been able to reduce underage drinking by five percent, which I consider a great accomplishment. Our board is consisted of all volunteers from twelve different sectors here within the community, and we do a variety of different programs, from drug take-back days to increased compliance checks, to a lot of school presentations and speakers. We do a biannual school survey, and all of that is in our annual report that I just handed out within two thousand thirteen, fourteen, fifteen. We work closely with the Board of Education and the Milford Police Department and a lot of activities and strategies. And I just want to thank you for the line item for this fiscal year, and I guess it will remain status quo. I don't know if there's any questions.
Anyone have any questions for the Milford Prevention Council? Alderman Shaw.
The decrease that you indicate in the brochure, is that done by a survey that you give out to...
Yes, we do a biannual school survey. We were fortunate enough, we hadn't had data since two thousand and...around two thousand, so we implemented a school survey about five years ago that we do every two years. So we'll be doing another one in November. You're welcome.
Any more questions for Milford Prevention Council? Seeing...yes? Nineteen. Well, thank you very much, Wendy, for your presentation.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for all the work you do for the city of Milford. The next account on tonight's agenda is account number four-one-one-five, Registrar of Voters, page fifteen.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. For those of you who don't know, I'm Carrie Rowland, and this is Deborah Fellenbaum. Unlike most departments that come before you, or pretty much all of them, I guess, we have two department heads, so we're here to answer questions that you may have. We are very honored to serve as the registrars. We were both elected in November, took office in January, and one of the first things that we did was start to reorganize our office. And we did that because during the election day registration, where we serviced voters in our office, we had over two hundred people come through, and we realized that that space really wasn't sufficient the way it was organized. So we've worked very hard on that over the last couple of months, had terrific support from Public Works to help us do it, but we feel as though we're managing our space much better now. In addition to that, we do our daily work, which we've talked about before when we've come before you, as well as currently, we are in the canvas. And in addition to that, we've had a number of added list cleanup, if you will, that we've added to the canvas to make sure that our lists, voter rolls, are as accurate as possible. Like I said, when I started, we're here to answer questions, so I don't want to bore you with too many of the details, and Deborah, I think, has a couple of things to add.
Hello, voter bonum. I'd like to thank you for supporting us on our recent online testimony by signing and to oppose the Secretary of the State trying to change our local politics. And so I thank you for getting on board, the mayor included, signing our testimony. That was reassuring to us, and we felt the love, I might say. I'd like to also say that we immediately, besides defending our jobs, appointed deputies. Carrie appointed Laura Fucy as her deputy, and I have appointed Joyce Marlowe as my deputy. And we recently, last week, had an office meeting, and we decided that we have a pretty good team, and I think it's in light of the criticism that we were receiving clumped together from the Secretary of the State. We have worked very hard to get along in our office. We work together. We don't split parties and, you know, try to outdo one another. We do the job that has to be done, what is mandated by the Secretary of the State. And we recently did a inventory survey and discussed it with Joanne regarding elections so that we could reorder supplies that we needed to be efficient as possible, not only in our office, but out there at the polling places. And this week, we're having our ROVAC Secretary of the State Convention where we are attending for education, because it's required ten hours a year for our continuing education with the Secretary of the State. And anyway, I just think you can be proud of us because we try to support each other. We're looking and working together since January. We're looking at our strengths and our weaknesses and seeing how we can work together to be a better team, and I'm proud of us, so I hope you will be, too. And Carrie, why, answer all your questions. Oh, and visit our office. We'd love to have you come by. We'll make you coffee.
Alderman Kubek.
Hi. Carrie, there's a request here for six hundred and forty-five dollars for computer software and maintenance in the budget. Department request?
Yep.
What specifically kind of software and...
Well, we agreed when we met with the mayor and the finance director that that money would be put in with the computer. And we've, over the last couple of years, been trying to update and get us all on the same software programs so that we could communicate interoffensively with the materials that we get, but also throughout the city and with the state.
Because I remember that you said that there were some things you could open on one machine, but not on the other machine, and you were having issues with compatibility.
We're much closer now, although we still have a machine or two that are lagging a little bit behind.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alderman Shaw.
Can you speak to the seasonal temporary...I noticed that that line, history, you've been running about twenty thousand in that line. I noticed that, I think on the finance board, it's at fifteen thousand? Is that...
Well, yes. We ask for that amount, and then we're able...because over the last couple of years, we haven't been fully staffed, we've been able to transfer funds in order to have our seasonal temporaries there, in order to get the work done, especially around election time. So we try very hard to live within our budget, line by line, but when we can't, we make that transfer to make sure that we continue to do the work that needs to get done.
Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Cheerthrew. We are very proud of you, probably the very few people that do get along on the opposite sides. Can you tell me, or elaborate on the fact, is the problem resolved now with the Secretary of State?
Do you want to speak to that? It's...they're doing...sorry, they are working on substitute language. From what we understand, she's withdrawn, the fact that she wants to go down to one registrar, but now she's looking for ways to fine us or fire us with a complaint from a voter, so it's still a little scary.
Or her.
Yeah. A voter...a poll worker can say, "We didn't train them properly," and we can get fined or fired, and it goes through Superior Court. We're going to be treated like criminals. That's our understanding at this point, so it's a little scary.
Okay, thank you. Good luck.
Yeah, thank you. And we just want to add, there is good news. The Hartford registrars, for better or for worse, and we'll leave that for another day, the courts there ruled that their Board of Aldermen, or the equivalent, tried to remove them from office, and that that was not allowed due to the fact that they were elected by the people of the community. So there is hope. It's just scary, like Deborah said, that, you know, just somebody's pointing a finger can land us in court defending what we do day in and day out.
Well, good luck with it. It's a good team. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions for the registrar? Seeing none. Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. Thank you for the great work you do for the registrar's office in the city of Milford.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, the hearing schedule will be account number four-one-two-nine, City Clerk, page twenty-two.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Joanne Rourke, and this is Bonnie Pelosi, my assistant city clerk. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank you for, on behalf of the city clerk's office, to present our budget for the fiscal year 2015, 2016. This is my first year preparing a budget, and I would personally like to thank my dedicated staff, and Peter Aradichi, and the Finance Department for their assistance. Our office is visited by hundreds of citizens each and every week. We are truly a liaison to the community, and we take great pride in our public interactions. Our office is responsible for certified copies of birth, death, and marriage certificates. We issue marriage licenses, as well as burial and cremation permits. The city clerk's office records all documents related to real estate transactions, collections of conveyance taxes, as well as filing and maintaining maps, trade names, military discharges, liquor license recordings, notary public certificates. The Office of City Clerk maintains the records of all the city boards and commissions. These minutes and agendas are filed with our office, and we are guided by local, state, and federal laws, particularly as it relates to the freedom of information. We work regularly with the registered voters all year long. We are the direct conduit of information and updates that come from the Secretary of State. As the election season comes upon us, our interaction is frequent and systemic. Our office is responsible for absentee ballots and voter registration when the registrar's office is unavailable. The city clerk's office maintains issuance of dog licenses and sportsman licenses that are required by Connecticut state law. We also serve in the capacity of accepting...as the accepting agent for civil actions brought against our city. Our office processes claims and suits brought against cities and submits these documents to the city attorney and risk manager. Our community is...our community interest is far-reaching. We, along with the other departments, conduct community campaigns all year long. For example, during the past winter holiday season, we worked hand-in-hand with the Milford firefighters to enhance their Toys for Tots programs. Currently, the staff is involved in accepting donations for the Animal Control Center during our forty-sixth Annual Municipal Clerks Week, taking place the first week of May. During my first year as city clerk, I have expanded the work initiated by my predecessor, Linda Stock. I have continued to enhance efficiencies and streamline processes in our office. I continue to examine systemic issues so we can work smarter with transparency. I have networked with fellow town and city clerks to research the best solutions to create these efficiencies. I've examined best practices statewide and feel that Milford is on the cusp in the implementation of the state-of-the-art records accessibility and records retention. I am presently working on two projects that will enhance our department. The first project is the procurement of technology that will allow the public to print land records directly to the printer or copying machine. After working with our IT department, as well as vendors, we feel this would create an ease of productivity, cost efficiency, and less wear and tear on our land record documents. I am also in the planning stages and worked with different vendors and MIS Gene in the preparation of backing up our vital records. This will be a long, ongoing project for years, but in my opinion, it is imperative project for the city of Milford. I have handed each one of you a line-by-line proposed budget, as well as a projected budget for this year. If you have any questions at this time, I'd be happy to answer them.
Alderman Stanford.
Yes, I'm looking at item number four-nine-eight-oh-zero-six-zero-one. The security system. I noticed that you put in for a security system of eleven thousand, two hundred dollars, and that was rejected. Well, could you explain what that security system is?
I was looking into putting in panic buttons in our office, as well as security cameras to be able to view our vault and the records that we have in there. I am presently working with the police department on the panic buttons. I haven't given up the idea for the security cameras because I think they're imperative in today's world, unfortunately, and I'm looking for different avenues on retrieving those funds. Thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions for the city clerk's office? Seeing none, thank you so much, Joanne, for your great presentation and for the work you do for our wonderful city. Keep up the good work.
Thank you. Thank you.
The next item on the hearing schedule is going to be account number four-one-two-nine...four-one-one-two, I'm sorry, elections, page fourteen.
Hi, that's part of both of our offices, but actually, it is my line item. We work directly with, as you know, the registrar's office, and they come to us for things that they need in their office, and basically, our office is just approving the expenditure.
It's all related to elections.
It's all...yes. So if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them. We're presently looking...do you want to expand on that? What we're trying to do?
We have a few things that we have fallen behind in. One of them is our election booths. You know where you go and you fill out your ballot. We're required by state statute to have one per two-hundred-and-fifty voters. Over the last seven or eight years, that we've used those ballot boxes or stands where voting booths, where you cast your ballot, there's been some damage. They're plastic, so when we put them up and take them down every year, the little tabs that keep them in place have broken off. We've bought in the past some replacements, but there's other things that make them wobbly and hard to use, so we have...we are looking to place an order to replace some of those and make sure that we're in compliance with the number that we're required to have. We've also been replacing on an annual basis the memory cards that actually count and keep count of the ballots that are cast. The original memory cards that came with the tabulators had a battery in them. They've all slowly but surely died out on us. We've discovered one or two or three every year that we've been testing, so we've been...we're in the third year of a four-year purchase of twelve memory cards. That's another expense that we are looking to purchase. And I mentioned in my testimony to you, election day registration, and that we had over two hundred people come through our office for the governor's race, and we're anticipating close to five hundred for the presidential election. That's going to be impossible for us to do in our office, and we are working with Gene and Joanne to utilize space in the gym to have those people come in and out that are close enough to our office, so if any problems or issues come up. And one of the things that we'd like to do is purchase laptop computers so that the people working election day registration can actually hook into the Connecticut voter registration system through the computer and register people immediately to cut down on the wait time. People were waiting anywhere from two to twelve, fifteen, maybe even twenty minutes at the height during the governor's race. So that kind of equipment is necessary to just keep the flow of the voters, especially if we're going to see five hundred to six hundred people. And the reason we're estimating that is because when we had the last presidential election, there were about six hundred people who cast presidential ballots, so we're anticipating that number to be about the same. So those are some of the things that we...once we hold an election day, we have all those expenses. We look to try to have a little money left over to keep up with our supplies and inventory. And the other thing that the Secretary of the State is looking to pass is electronic poll books. So you know how you walk into the polling place to cast your vote, and you tell the sweet person on the other side your name, and they look at your license, and then they cross you off with a red pencil, like I think we've been doing for over a hundred years? We're hoping to be able to do that via a laptop, a scanner of your barcode of your actual license, or even an iPad. So we're looking into a lot of that technology, too, as it's going to be put down that we have to use it eventually, so we're trying to stay ahead of the curve and at least be educated. We're hoping to demo one in November, so keep an eye out for it. It might be in your polling place.
Does anyone have any questions for elections? Seeing none.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne, and Carrie, and Deborah. Next up on the hearing schedule is going to be account number four-one-six-zero, Housing Code Board of Appeals, and I don't see them in the audience. Does anybody have any questions for that particular department? Mr. Mayor, Housing Code Board of Appeals. There's nobody in the audience to answer any questions.
I think it's relatively straightforward. There's an account for secretarial fees. If you need any information, I'm happy to provide that with you.
Does anyone have any questions for that particular department? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next account, is four-one-four-six, Flood and Erosion Board. I also don't see anybody...same thing?
No, but as you know, Mr. Chairman, that board has really been rejuvenated over the past year, year and a half. They are full strength. We have three engineers on that board, and they are providing oversight for a lot of the flood and erosion projects that we are currently pursuing, both the grant-based projects that we receive from the CDBG-DR program, as well as those projects that we are funding locally from the two-thousand-and-fourteen authorization that your board provided.
Does anybody have any questions for the Tree Commission? Seeing none, we'll move on to account number four-one-five-six, Conservation Commission?
Tree Commission?
Tree Commission, I'm sorry. What did I say, Conservation Commission? I'm sorry.
I don't see anybody here from trees.
Good evening. I'm Bill Putrea. I chair the Milford Conservation Commission. As many of you probably know, we're essentially a land use board made up of nine volunteer members. Our statutory responsibility is the evaluation and recommendations of subdivision applications, and we comment on the open space aspects of those applications. We also make recommendations for open space acquisitions, and we do outreach and education for the responsible use of our open spaces. That's basically our mission. Our budget's pretty simple. Most of it's taken up by secretarial fees for meeting minutes, and the rest of it's for training and education of our members. Being a volunteer board, training's very important so that our members are up to speed on the kinds of technical aspects that they need to understand relative to planning and zoning and conservation issues. Be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Anyone have any questions for the Conservation Commission? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for the great work you do for the city. I'm going to be calling up Chief Mello for the Milford Police Department, account number 4310, page 43 in your books.
Mr. Chairman, I realize that your folks have been very busy, and I'll try to be brief. I just want to make a brief statement regarding this year's budget. When you look at their year's budget, there's a minimal increase of approximately $250,000. That increase doesn't cover the contractual wage increase in the personnel accounts. So what you're looking at is really less money this year than you had last year. The wage increase was set by a union contract that is effective in July. The budget represents no growth, with the exception of five personal body cameras to supplement the 30 body, excuse me, yes, the 30 body cameras that we already have. And then there is also cost for cloud storage. Other than that, it's the same budget that we've had last year. It's going to maintain the same level of services that we've had in the past year. So there's no growth in any area in terms of equipment or programs or training. And training is certainly a concern. I think we can expect when we look at some of what's going on nationally and within the state, that there'll be some likely mandates, additional mandates in training, which will undoubtedly cost us money. And there will likely be some mandates in equipment as well, which will cost us money. This budget is similar to last year in regards to, we know that based on past practice or based on the history of the budget and known reoccurring costs, that we're at a $375,000 shortfall. We see that this year, and we know that's going to happen next year. This year, we're very close to, hopefully, when we look at surplus and other accounts based on vacancies, we'll have enough to pay our personnel costs at the end of the year. And I want to just go on record to say that it's going to be very difficult again next year, and it's possible that that may not happen. It just depends on whether there'll be vacancies or not to create a surplus. Nevertheless, it's sufficient to maintain public safety at the same level that we've maintained it during the past year. And I also want to just make mention of one other item, our combined dispatch system. As many of you know, and for the folks that weren't on the Alderman, the Board of Alderman several years ago, we had upgraded based on approval, funding approval from this board, our, the police department radio system. During that, we discovered that there were two systems, one PD, one fire. In realizing that it was very expensive in terms of millions of dollars to support both those infrastructures, we combined into a single infrastructure. Fire also has a new radio system. For the last several years, it resides on the police department backbone and infrastructure. At that time, we also proposed and implemented a combined dispatch center where the PSAP is now combined into one center. All the PSAP information was moved over to the police department. I also serve now as the PSAP director for the city of Milford. Where both fire dispatchers and police dispatchers sit in the same room, and then when one calls, come into the same center. There's no delay, there's no transfer. It's also allowed us to receive additional funding from the state because we, they, we were being penalized for having a decentralized system. Now we have a centralized system. In addition to that, we were, with the cooperation of the fire department, we were able to place the fire dispatchers on the police department computer aided dispatch program, the Sun Guard system that we put in place approximately five years ago. So we're all using the same system, the same dispatch system, and there's a number of efficiencies involved there. All that sits on our budget. The radio system, maintenance costs, which will be significant next year, because next year is the first year they really kick in, and the Sun Guard maintenance system for the computer aided dispatch system, that wasn't separated, it sits here. We're paying for that in this budget. But primarily, the reason I wanted to mention that is the final phase of this program is to realize some efficiencies and staffing efficiencies and cross-train both the fire and police dispatchers, civilian dispatchers, to be able to do each other's jobs. That way, when, during off-peak times, when we know the data shows us we don't need as many dispatchers as we have in the room right now, that we can reduce staffing levels, provided that both police and fire can do each other's jobs. So what we've proposed and what we expect to see during this budget is that those police dis, excuse me, those fire dispatchers, civilian dispatchers, will be transferred over to the police department budget and under administrative control of the police department. And in no way does that affect the operational control of police or fire dispatchers. It's, fire maintains control over their dispatches. We'll maintain control over ours.
Chief, could you explain to us the account number 41500000, Professional Services? I see you requested $35,000, and we got $30,000. What does that entail?
Mr. Chairman, that's computer consulting services, and I'm actually glad you brought that up. We have historically taken trained police officers to, and put them in, created positions of computer consultants. We don't have an IT person. We were fortunate enough that Lieutenant Bothwell, who had a strong skill set when it came to computer technology, we were then, we had Todd Richards, who had an engineering background and was interested in computers. They've since retired. Deputy Chief Butler also had a strong background in computer systems. He has retired. As I'm told by Deputy Chief Butler, who has retired, as I mentioned, that our systems are, is sophisticated, probably, I'm sorry, more sophisticated than the entire city combined. And that may be disputed, but I invite you to come over and see our computer center, and you'll realize that we have some very sophisticated, very complex systems. We receive support from the Business Network Group, which I believe has the contract with MIS, and that, those costs are to pay for those services to maintain our systems. We're, we need an IT person. We're trying to find a police officer that has an interest and has an aptitude. We really haven't been successful, so we've taken two police officers off the road, and we're trying to teach them a little bit about networking and computers and security and some of, you know, some of those items.
Thank you, Chief. Anyone have any questions? Alderman Stamford.
Good evening, Chief.
Good evening.
I have two questions. One on item number 4944, Police Safety Equipment. You asked for $31,057, and the mayor and the Board of Finance are giving you $15,000. And the other item is 49440213, Divider Cage, which you've asked for $20,800. Last year, you got $10,000 for that. This year, you're only getting $5,200. Could you explain those two items?
Sure. I'll take the last one first, if I could. The divider cages, if you recall, we used to have the Crown Victoria Cruisers, and they discontinued that model, and now nationwide across the industry, we're using different platforms. We use the Taurus and the Ford Explorer. It's the same interior platform. In the past, we'd, in the past, we have equipment that we could just transfer to the next car, but because we're buying all-new cars, we have to buy new equipment. So that account reflects the divider cages that we put between the front compartment and the prisoner. It's a prisoner containment system. In the past, we would put cages in there, but people get hurt in there, they become violent back there. So this is a molded containment system where they, they're secure, but they can't hurt themselves as well. Once we, and I believe this is the last year, that we'll have to purchase those, because I think we'll have replaced all the Crown Victorias. I believe there may have been one or two LEP. And once those are replaced, you'll see those numbers disappear, because we'll just reuse what we have, and then we'll be on a replacement cycle as things start to deteriorate, we'll just buy new ones. So that's what that last account is. And the first question, 4944, Police Safety Equipment, those are items, the breakdown of those items are console parts. There are, when you look inside an interior of a police car, you'll see a console that is installed, that has the various electronic equipment and mounts and some of those things that are needed. That's equipment to replace those. There are the window bars that we place on the windows, that you'll see when you look in the back of a cruiser, there's bars to, really, not necessarily to keep people in, but we often have windows kicked out. Prisoners get violent back there, they're handcuffed, but they start kicking the windows out. So it protects the windows, and it also will keep them secure. There's also a forensic alternative light source kit that our ID Bureau needs to replace the one that they do have. That's used to analyze crime scenes and look for fingerprints, body fluids, things such as that. There's bike safety lighting that comes out of that, there's a whole array of things. One of the things that we decided to do this year is for Milford Center. We don't put bikes in there at night because they're not equipped for the hours of darkness. And I have some concern about putting them out in the hours of darkness, but we have a plan this year where we're going to put additional lighting on the bikes and use those during the weekends, during the busy times, to try to cover more area. We have a sufficient number of police officers down here, down there, but we want to make sure that we can cover more area as opposed to being on foot. So that is in there as well. There's some equipment for the canine unit that they need, bite sleeves, training harnesses, those things. There's some warning lights and strobes that are used for detective bureau cars that are in there. And, and again, the consoles and that amounts, that's, well, when I look at the budget, we'll have to reduce some of those things. Likely, I'll take out the forensic ALS light kit, but that was based on what the request is. Based on what the reduction is, some of those things will have to come out of there.
Thank you, Chief, and to Milford's finest for all you do.
Oh, thank you.
Also, Chief, I noticed animal food, obviously, that's for our canines, but I don't see any other expense for the canines.
The only expense for canine is in the wage account, and that is, based on the Garcia ruling of years ago, we have to pay them that stipend, and that's on the wage side. And the only other account besides that would be the, I just mentioned, where we buy their safety harnesses, their leashes, leads, and their other supplies. Hi, how are you?
I don't, I don't think you've addressed this. Forgive me if you have, but there's for personal protective equipment, there's a $52,359 request, which looks like it's denied. What's that, personal protective equipment?
You referring to 4944?
Yes, sir.
Yes. That's an item that I place in every year. After 9/11, there was some concern in the country that law enforcement wouldn't be prepared for a chemical attack. So the government purchased, the federal government purchased personal protective equipment for law enforcement and for fire. And it consists of a gas mask with filters and a suit. They don't, there was an expiration date on that, and since it expired, every year, that's the cost of replacing it. It's very unlikely that we're going to need that. I mean, you know, it's a possibility, but the probability is unlikely, at least right now. So when we look to reduce money, it's a big-ticket item, we reduce that. Unfortunately, we're not equipped for the, you know, the unlikelihood that does, that does happen, but when it comes down to that or something else, I usually take that out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Golden.
I don't have a question. I just wanted to commend you and the department for the wonderful job that you do, keeping us all safe. I see you guys at the mall and all around the town, and it always gives me a sense of security. And I also wanted to mention about the school resource officer. They're amazing. And my kids, I have a daughter that goes to Jonathan Law High School, and we see him all the time. And he's very visible, and those kids really respond well to it. So I just wanted to come forward and say that I am a big supporter of the police department.
Great, thank you. The yes or o's have been a big hit, and, you know, I want to thank all of you who are responsible to, you know, to approve that program, and it's, we're getting tremendous, it's paying tremendous dividends for all of us. Thank you.
Alderman Gorman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the chief. Chief, overall, do you feel a demand for the police services in Milford are increasing, decreasing, or about the same?
They're about the same. You know, crime has gone down. I can see that from the UCR, and the mayor, we had a conversation about that, and appreciate your phone call. And, but the calls for services remains the same. Traffic stops have gone down. They've gone down across the state. We've seen that. But calls for services have gone down, excuse me, have stayed the same, arrests have stayed the same. In Milford Center, I just met with the Chamber of Commerce and the Downtown Business Association, and we talked about how we were making about between 10 and 12 arrests a night down in Milford Center in the summer for quality-of-life stuff. So we're still aggressive on our enforcement, but relatively, calls are the same. I do want to mention though, and I appreciate your question, mandates have increased, so our time has been reduced. The accident report now takes 45 minutes, where it used to take 20 minutes. Their mandate, all the mandated reporting that we have to do is taking a lot more of the officer's time. Thank you.
Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. Good evening, Chief. How are you?
Good evening. How are you?
In light of what's happening all over the country with police and their handling of situations, particular situations, does that force you into a situation where there's retraining or additional training? How, can you elaborate on the relationship to our department, to the rest of the country, as to what's happening with the way police are handling situations?
That's a pretty complex question, and we could have a discussion that would last several hours on that, but to try to give you a short answer, clearly, we watch what goes on around the country, and we dissect them. But we try to dissect everything, not just, you know, an edited portion of video or a story that plays in the media. We get, in fact, I had a lecture, I was just at a lecture at Sacred Heart before I came here with Chief Flynn from Milwaukee. And so we're putting a lot of effort into finding out exactly what the issues are and trying to really, you know, dig into these, these issues and these matters, dissect them as much as possible. And we'd be foolish not to learn from those. And we don't feel that we have those issues here, and I'm not going to even comment, I'm not even making a determination as to the right or wrong, or the appropriateness of anything that's going around the country. It's not for me to say, and it's, you know, that's why we have, you know, juries and, you know, investigations and things such as that. But we're concerned, whether real or imagined, we're concerned about perceptions, because it does impact us. And we're starting to see that in our policing. I could show, I looked at a video today that I showed every police officer of three of our officers being baited and verbally abused, threatened. I think it would surprise you to see what some of the officers are going through. The personal body cameras are showing us that, and we had anticipated many years ago, when we started the personal body camera program, that, and actually, I'll tell you a story, I don't want to take too much time, but I got an edited version of a video camera, of a cellphone video from an area of town where three police officers had put someone on the ground and wrestled with this person and handcuffed them, and there was a lot of yelling and screaming, and it's violent, because it always is violent. That's what it is. It's violence. Police officers are supposed to win that encounter, they're not supposed to lose, and you don't want them to lose. And, and so I looked at it and thought, wow, this is really bad. This is really ugly. Doing an internal affairs investigation, I drew an impression based on what I saw, and talked to the officers and interviewed witnesses, and realized there was a lot more that had happened. Well, it was that moment that I realized, we need video, I want personal body cameras, because I want to be able to look at the whole scene, and I want you to be able to see the whole scene, because it's going to tell us where police officers behave inappropriately and badly more often. And the data shows us this, that it's going to show that, that people will lie, people will disobey the law, and, and those things are important for all of us to see, especially when we start to look at the conduct of human beings. So we started the personal body camera program well before any of this stuff. In terms of training, our officers have all undergone repeatedly a fair and impartial policing training. We're, our, our training budget is $85,000 in the red. It's an $85,000 budget. We've spent additionally $85,000. is $85,000 in the red. It's an $85,000 budget. We've spent additionally $85,000. That's how much this training costs, when you have to send every police officer somewhere else to go to a second set of fair and impartial policing. But we felt it was important. But these are things we've always done. Will we do more? Will we be mandated to do more? Possibly. And that's okay. But we're watching what goes on in the country, and we're putting it into perspective. But we'll respond accordingly, based on what people expect and what they demand.
Thank you, Chief. I just wanted to comment on, you and your staff were on the ball and got that grant from the state for distracting driving. I know it's brand-new, but you have anything to say about how are we doing with our distracting drivers in Milford?
That's a federal grant program, and they provide federal funding to go out and do that. And that's why you see so many people there as well. We always have a big push-up on motor vehicle enforcement in the April and May months, because it's warm weather, people are going to start driving, school's going to be out, and we want to create the impression that if you're going to commit a violation, it's a strong likelihood you're going to be, we're going to catch it. The numbers are pretty high. You know, we still have a lot of people talking on cellphones, and a lot of young people still texting. Our goal is to reduce that, because it's, you know, clearly unsafe.
Thank you, Chief. Any more questions for Alderman Ginatazio?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. Good evening, Chief Mello.
Good evening.
You mentioned training, that specific budget item that you were about $85,000 in the red. I've noticed there's the city, the police force has gone through a transition. I, from my perspective, it seems like a much younger force.
Correct.
So should we anticipate possible, because the force is much younger, that there's going to be additional training in the future? Or is the training, more or less, like you said, always at the same level?
It's always there. We try to provide as much training as possible. We spend a lot of money on training. We do a lot of training. We're fortunate, because we have Simon Lake, which allows us to bring instructors in and train a lot of people at once, as opposed to sending people elsewhere. We just had a federal agency in to help train. People love it. We're working with other police departments in the area to partner. The training will stay the same. It's continuous development. But you're absolutely right, we're a very young police department. We've had a lot of folks retire, and we've hired a lot, and we will hire, I think we'll probably hire, probably seven to eight more over this year. But it looks like it's going to level off when you look at just who can retire.
Just to follow up, Mr. Chairman, being that you have to train, and these officers have to be taken off of the job in order to do that, does that create an issue for staffing?
Well, it does, and that's a lot of times where the overtime comes in. That's that training overtime that I just mentioned. Fortunately, we have other resources that we can tap into to help pay for instructors to come in, so we can keep those numbers down. Not for the overtime, but certainly for the cost of instructors. We try to do as much as we can on duty. But, you know, we have contractual obligations as to when we have to hire back. It's at 60%. And the staffing levels vary based on the season. So you'll see more training in the cold-weather months, because we can reduce staffing a little bit, as opposed to summer months.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Alderman Frank Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Chief. Your department had requested three dispatchers that was taken out of the budget. Does that have something to do with the new dispatch communication systems and so forth? And what was the need there that's not being fulfilled in this budget?
Good evening. And that, it's a good question. The reason I put those in there, the police department years ago, police departments used to use police officers to dispatch, and they realized, why are we paying, you know, a police officer's salary and all that training and equipment to sit in the dispatch center? Most police officers don't want to do it anyways, and quite frankly, they're really not that good at it, because they don't do it all the time. And so the goal was years ago to gradually replace the police officers into a civilian dispatcher. You'll see most departments, certainly departments our size, they have civilian dispatchers. Fire has all civilian dispatchers. And they have a number of part-timers, per diem, excuse me, I'm sorry, part-timers that they can use to fill vacancies. We had started that, we got up to five, we needed eight, we got up to five, and then years ago, we laid one off. We've never replaced that dispatcher. So we're down to four dispatchers. Well, before we can fully integrate into a police-fire combined system, we have to get, take the police officers out of there, because every day, there's a police officer working there. And we have to take them out of there, because we don't want police officers ever dispatching fire. Fire doesn't want that, and we don't want that. They're not trained to know how fire operates. So it puts us at a disadvantage. We can still operate. It just means that that person couldn't be utilized on both sides. But primarily, the reason why it was placed this year as opposed to next year is there's a PSAP upgrade, the Public Safety Answering Point, the 911. The upgrade hits Milford in September. And one of the things that, they're being strict on the regulations, that you have to be a trained dispatcher to work in there. So you have to go to telecommunications school, you have to go to emergency medical dispatch school, and you have to go to PSAP school. Now, that's expensive, and it doesn't make sense to send police officers to that school, especially if they're not going to do it long-term. So what we propose is that we would hire three civilian dispatchers that we would, unless you, and so the police officers would come out of there, we train these dispatchers, and we would have now a full complement of dispatchers, because we don't need, again, I mentioned that we needed eight. I think we can do it with just six on the PD side, because during the off-peak hours, we don't need as many people as we have in there now. Thank you.
Any more questions for the police department? Seeing none, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you all, thank you for all the work that you do for the residents of the city of Milford, keeping us all safe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
The next department on the hearing schedule is account number 4193, Public Library. They're not here?
They're moved to 429.
They're moved to 429. We'll move on to account number 4141, Board of Finance, page 26. I don't see any questions. Well, with no questions, we'll move on to the next account on the hearing schedule, which would be account number 4153, Park Beach and Recreation Commission, page 31.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'll entertain any questions for the Parks, Beach and Recreation Commission.
Does anyone have any questions for Paul, for the Parks and Recreation? Everybody knows everything already. Alderman Gorman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, to Mr. Biscatelli. Can you just give a quick rundown of activity in Recreation, and what's happened, and what's good thing? Oh, that's the commission, sorry. Never mind.
Seeing none, we'll move on to the next account, which is account number 4620, Recreation Department, page 82.
Thank you. The proposed budget, that's before you, shows a reduction over last year's budget. I am very pleased that the dedicated staff of the Recreation Department has been continually able to find efficiencies and creative ways to not only maintain, but also to improve the services that we provide to all the residents of Milford. These services and programs that we provide help make Milford a vibrant community where people want to live, work, and play, and we're very proud of that. And at this time, I'll take any questions you may have.
Alderman Gorman.
Okay, now my question is, sorry. Can you give a little rundown on the activity in Milford? What's happening? What's the top activities? How much activity?
Certainly, 302, Alderman Gorman, Mr. Chairman. The Recreation Department this time of year is gearing up for our annual summer list of activities. We have not only summer camps, but also cultural enrichment programs that are run throughout the city during the school vacation month. We are able to run programs this year for about eight weeks of the summer, since school is getting out earlier than it has in the past. The youth sports are still very popular in town, with lacrosse and soccer probably being the most popular. Youth baseball and softball, I've seen a little decline in the last few years, but those are still very healthy activities here in Milford. Our winter programs, which have just concluded, again, were well-attended. We're at maximum capacity in a lot of those places. We can't play any more basketball games, because we don't have any more courts to play on. Our aerobic facilities are jam-packed. So, you know, we're really at a point where space concerns are dictating how we can offer programs here in the community.
Any more questions for the Recreation Department? Seeing none, thank you, thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Thank you for all the great work you do for the city of Milford. The next account on the budget hearing schedule is account number 4121, Mayor's Office, page 17.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. This year's proposed budget for the Mayor's Office is relatively status quo, a de minimis increase that's associated with wage adjustments. Other than that, I think the only other adjusted line in them is gas and other propellants went down by $500. And I think it went down two years ago, too, by $1,000 or $2,000. The vehicle I drive is a hybrid, and as you can see from the past history, generally, $500 to $1,000 has been sufficient. But again, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Anyone having any questions? Alderman Stamford.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Is it true that you, your chair in the office is broken? And has been?
The chairs in the office are, they have a lot of history, just like the city of Milford, 375 years. The chairs aren't quite that old, but they have character. They have stories unto themselves. We want to make sure that they're all safe, but at the same time, keep some of that history.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions for the mayor? Seeing none, we'll move on to account number 4122, General Expenses, page 17. The page is actually page 19. It says 17 on our schedule. Any questions regarding general expenses? Seeing none. Want to thank the mayor for the great job you've been doing since you've been in office, and for keeping all the expenses down. I can't forget you, to forget you, being the CEO. So we're going to move right on to Department 4142, Department of Permitting and Land Use, page 27. No. You can begin any time, Joe.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. I'm Joe Griffith. I'm the Director of Permitting and Land Use. I guess I can't say that I'm new at the position, but I still feel like I'm pretty far down on the learning curve and still, you know, learning quite a bit as we're moving along. I'd like to briefly go through this package that we handed out to describe it, kind of give you an overview. Pages one through three are the overview I'll be going through. Pages four and five are the budget that we're looking at from your books. And then I've provided some backup data, some of the reporting that we've been generating. Most importantly, on page six, reflects the numbers of permits that we've been generating in the past previous year, and then also the first three years of this, excuse me, first three quarters of this year. Clearly, these are the building permits, but obviously, they're a reflection of the zoning permits that are also being issued as customers come into our office. Pages seven, eight, and nine are reports that are generated from QLIS. That's the system that we use as people come into the building and are invariably waiting in lines to get their permits. What these reports are good for, aside from showing the volume of people and the, you know, unfortunately, the times that they are waiting, and how we're trying to cut down on those waits, but also on page nine in particular, showing the seasonal fluctuations that we see as people, in the summer months, we see a large increase in applications, people coming into the office, and then it slacks off in the winter months. Also, in looking at page nine, you see it kind of in general, a declining sinusoidal curve, I guess you'd call it. That's also a reflection of our concentrating on getting people to do their permitting online. We're trying to increase the use of online permitting and frankly, keep people from having to come in and wait to see a building inspector. And then finally, the remaining pages, 10 or so pages, are the data, the breakdown of the permits that are used to generate the report on page, on page six. The various types of permits and the various types of construction that we are administering. So if I could, just briefly, our budget this year represents an $11,000 increase, which is a 1.1% increase over last year's budget. It's $10,500, of which is due to salary increase costs, contractual wage adjustments. In the past year, I was here before you last year, and under discussion was the elimination of the Assistant City Planner's position. Obviously, that position was eliminated, and in the past year, we've been doing a lot of, I'll say, work to readjust and realign ourselves to make sure that we are assuming those responsibilities completely without impacting the performance of the office. The elimination of the position required us to assume the responsibilities that were carried out by Ms. Harrigan, most notably, the review of development in coastal areas. And these have been reassigned. And these have been reassigned to our City Planner and Zoning Enforcement Officer through their enforcement of the zoning regulations. Similarly, Ms. Harrigan was filling the role of the Flood Plane Administrator, and that role has been taken on by me. And it really did require us formalizing the procedures for plan review and inspection for both through the enforcement of zoning regulations and building code in order to make sure that we are adhering to the federal, the FEMA regulations. Also, in the past year, in November, one of our building inspectors resigned his position, and up until about two weeks ago, that position was vacant. And I really would like to commend our other inspectors, Mr. Gariak, Mr. Carell, and Mr. Rouchy, for just making sure that the applications were handled in a, you know, an appropriate amount of time. They didn't slack off on their responsibilities as far as enforcing the code and conducting their inspections, and I really don't think we suffered. I should also note that the vacancy took place again during the winter months, which was fortunate. And I'll go into a little later on how we've now filled that vacancy. Another major change in the office has been the introduction of the receptionist. We've staffed, in the mornings while we're issuing permits, we've staffed the front desk at the Parsons Building with a receptionist. This is in accordance with the crit report, whose role it is to greet customers, triage them, I guess if you will, make sure that their basic information is put into our system. So we're no longer relying on zoning enforcement officers or building inspectors to input data. We've got a part, or excuse me, a seasonal temporary staff who, she's working out great, she's there greeting customers and then assisting them as she is able to make sure that they're going down to the zoning office first and then queued up for the review of plans with the building department. It seems to be reducing the wait time quite a bit and also seems to be, or I know, is a much more efficient use of our building inspectors as well as our zoning enforcement officer. As I said, the role is primarily, the responsibility that we've developed in this role is primarily filled by our temporary staff, although other DPLU staff, our secretaries, are also doing the job. And so, again, it's our intention to make sure that everybody is in a position to understand what that role is and able to fill that role, and I see that role becoming more and more important as we move forward. Another thing that we've been working on, I think, have been successful in in the past year, is introducing or increasing our productivity, and that's specifically through our increased use of technology and developing synergies between the two offices. It's an ongoing effort, we're going to keep working on it, but we're implementing ways to increase our use of technology in order to document and record the data and information, and then make it, more importantly, make it available to our customers, to the contractors, to the clients that come in. By standardizing our procedures and making sure that we're all generating the same type of inspection reports and generating the same type of plan reviews, make sure that they are done efficiently and quickly, and then making sure that that information is available to the customers, be it through email or be it through standard filing systems that anyone can access, is just improving a better relationship with our customers and frankly, a more efficient way of generating permits. And then, I think most importantly, we've been emphasizing an increase in customer service as we move forward. I'd say we've reestablished our values or our implicit mission statement, which is to assist our customers in accomplishing their work in a safe and code-compliant way. Chief Mello's gone, so I guess it's okay if I butcher what he said at a meeting of ours. He said, "His force doesn't consider it a victory when they're placing somebody under arrest." And again, that's not a good thing. You're there to prevent crime. By the same token, I listened to that and said, you know, that holds true with our building inspectors as well. I think throughout the industry, there's this certain amount of pride, if you will, if an inspector goes out and finds a code violation, the more discreet or the more, you know, the better it is. But that really can't be considered a victory. Our job is to make sure that these buildings are designed safe and in compliance with our regulations and with our codes. And really, if we are not issuing the permits, if we're not issuing the certificates of occupancy, that really is a failure on our part. And it's our job to make sure that these jobs are done in a code-compliant way. And I think that we're coming around to that frame of mind, and I think that's an important change that's taken place there. It's happening in the building office, the zoning office, as well as inland wetlands, and getting inland wetlands, I think she's always been conducting herself in a very professional way, but just that mindset, I think, is an important change that we're dealing with there. Our staffing objectives in the coming year, we have filled our vacancy in the last few weeks. Lou Rizzoli has started with us, went through a rather extensive interview process, selection process. He came out on top unanimously, and specifically, I think what's interesting is, notwithstanding his qualifications and his experience as a contractor and as a building official, as a police officer, he just came across as, formally as a police officer, he came across as really having very refined people skills, which, again, we saw that as a really good value in this office. We're going to continue to respond and hold to our turnaround as far as plan reviews and inspections throughout the seasonal fluctuations. We have staff, and I should note, we had relied on a retired building inspector who had been coming into our office in the past few years, Lou Akimporah, who passed away a few weeks ago. And I'd just like to acknowledge what a service he did to our office. But we have other staff, we have outside personnel who are available to us, licensed building officials who are available to us to take electronic transmissions of plans and turn around plan reviews for us as we get into a more busy time of the year, as well as another seasonal building official, Steve Stefan, who should be coming back from his winter quarters in Florida and help us out through the summer. So again, we do have, in addition to our full-time staff, we have the resources available to respond to the seasonal fluctuations. And as I said, another important developing asset that we have is this DPLU receptionist to, the more of the clerical functions that we can take away from the building inspectors and from the zoning enforcement officer and put in her lap, the more efficiently those offices are going to operate. So again, we're looking to improve and expand on her role, and it seems to be working pretty We're looking to, again, significantly reduce the waiting time for the customers. That, again, is happening through standardized procedures and distribution of the plans. As they're coming into the office, we have the ability to respond to the highs and lows of the influx through using outside plan review staff. I think most importantly, what we are working on is the expanded use of technology. We have this database view permit, which we've been using with varying levels of success. In the coming year, what we will be formally implementing is the use of the tablets and allowing the building inspectors to generate their field inspection reports electronically. The program is set up for that. It's not done to the standards that we're looking to see it adhere to. So again, it's more important that we hold to the standard of making sure that as we develop these templates, that specific construction systems are inspected uniformly and that the reporting that's being done on them is coming back to the office to be reviewed, and then that that information is being transmitted out to the clients and the contractors immediately. So we will be implementing and developing that further. We are working well with the Fire Marshal's Office as well as the Engineering Department. I can't say enough good things about our Fire Marshal in terms of their professionalism and their ability and willingness to work with us on these projects. And then one of the major goals that we're working towards this year is the submission of our CRS report. The Community Rating System directly impacts the insurance premiums that the people in the flood zones are paying under the NFIP program. We're looking to reduce our score, which should translate into a significant reduction in the premiums for these homeowners that have homes in the flood plains. What our office, the building inspector's office specifically, is doing is impacting the CRS rating, is our submission of what is called the Building Code Effectiveness Grading Schedule, the BCESG. Again, we are looking to hit a score of five for commercial and five for residential, which, again, will assist in reducing our CRS rating. What's interesting is as we implement these improvements that I've discussed and reviewed with you, they inevitably translate into better scoring through the BCEGS system and ultimately through the Community Rating System. So it becomes a kind of a valuable touchstone as we are implementing these procedures, these improvements, to see how they're translating into a lower score. So again, that's how we are evaluating our ongoing objectives. Beyond that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I just want to say, being a building and remodeling contractor in town, I've been in the past a little critical about the way things were, but I got to say that things have improved greatly since you've taken it over. I think you're doing a stand-up job, and I want to compliment you for it. The lines aren't there anymore than before. I mean, I make a living at it, so I could be, I got an excuse to be critical, but they've gone a long way, and I really appreciate your good work.
Thank you very much.
Alderman Vecarelli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've got one question on your revenue generating side for your permits. Could you tell me approximately what they are to date for all the departments there for you?
I hope so. Through the third quarter, I believe, our revenues right now are at $46,200. It's on page six. I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong column. That's the value of construction. I'm sorry.
End of year.
Total fees at the 2014, 2015, I guess it would be about a half million dollars, is what I'm looking at on page six. I should correct myself, I believe the total fees for the first three quarters of this fiscal year are $503,000. Excuse me, Joe, I have a private conversation. Where's that money go? Back to General Fund? Yes.
He just wants to point something out for you, Joe. It's hard to explain, it's better to just show you. You want to let the rest of the Alderman know that, what you found out?
Yeah, just what he said.
Any more questions for the Director? DPLU? Yes, Alderman Shaw.
Thank you, Chairman. You don't have to go into detail, but the CRS rating and getting to five, our rating now, I believe, is nine. At least it's...
Excuse me, CRS rating?
CRS rating.
I don't think we are...
We're at nine, are we not?
Our submit, Mr. Chair, through you.
Yes.
Our submission has been submitted, but the folks from FEMA are still reviewing our proposal, so we have not been rerated yet. We have an application that's presently pending. The hope is to get to somewhere close to five. I'm not sure whether we'll be able to get to five. Again, we're at a nine right now. We're hoping to get close to five, but again, our application is presently pending, or our request for a new review.
Let me be clear, it's my understanding that we won't get to five unless our building department has an ISO rating, a BCESG rating score of five and five, five being for commercial, the other five being for residential, so it's a, that's our role in this. There's a number of other things that we have been implementing as far as public information, what have you, in the flood plain, that will affect our CRS rating, but that's our, as I said, our role in this is really to make sure that our ISO rating is down at five.
Mr. Chairman, if I can just say one other thing. You know, obviously, I had some words to say on the last meeting regarding personnel, but I do want to say that since I work with you particularly and planning, I think, almost daily, I need to thank you for the efficiencies, and I know we had a conversation, and I just want to say publicly what I said on the phone, is I do appreciate the help, and I think, as you know or others should know, you came through and your department came through when we had volunteers come in and we needed to get the permitting within a short window, and deeply appreciative, so I'll concur with the Chairman. Thank you a lot.
Thank you.
Alderman Germin.
Mr. Chairman, through you, to the Director. So last year was a big issue to eliminate that position for Assistant City Planner. Has that been, I'm sure there's a lot of challenges, but is it severely missed? Is it, how's it going overall?
I think it's going well. I mean, as I said, the our zoning enforcement officer and city planner have assumed specific responsibilities, and I've assumed other responsibilities as Flood Plane Administrator. As I said, I, Emmeline did a lot of work, Emmeline worked hard. But at the same time, this has been an opportunity for us to kind of look at what she was doing and examine it and see how we could do it more efficiently. I mean, we had to do it more efficiently, and I think we are. I mean, we had to do it more efficiently, and I think we are, so.
Everybody picked up the pieces and moved on?
Yes.
Thank you. And it's good to hear that the mindset is changing slowly to, you know, more prevention and trying to help the process out instead of looking for mistakes and catching people, you know?
Yeah.
So it's nice to hear. Thank you.
Alderman Casey.
Thank you, through you. I just want to thank you for your efforts. I think I heard you earlier mention that some permits people can do online, and some people they have to go in. Some people don't really understand that they don't have to come in. Is that correct? They can do it online? If you could just explain that a little more.
Yes, specifically, the, well, electrical and plumbing permits are basic enough that, you know, if they're done by licensed electrician, we can issue a permit. So those are right now being done online. You provide us with your license, the scope of the work, the address, the fees, the workman's compensation documentation, and we can issue the permits online and keep you from waiting in the corridor. We should also, and I believe we're also doing that for roofing and siding, which again is a very basic type of construction, but a, but a large volume of the work. We can expand that. We can expand that to, well, solar panel installation. We're seeing more and more of that, and again, these typically done by licensed tradesmen with engineering reports and what have, and so I believe we can expand the, the online permitting process, and the more we can do that, the greater, essentially, the fewer chairs we'll need in the corridor.
Is there any education or anything to do? Do a lot of people come in who don't know any better? They can, they can, they don't have, they have to come in? Is there anything?
It's interesting, because as I said, the, I know specifically, when I am in the hallway, and I'll see people out there, I'll ask them, you know, "What are you here for?" And more often than not, there's still a number of electricians coming in, and they're here for an electrical permit. I'll tell them, "Do you know you can do this online?" A lot of them say, "No." A lot of them say, "Yeah, I can," but I'd just assume come in and talk to the building inspector. That's fine, too. The objective would be that when they come to the concierge desk, to the receptionist, that she is able to short-circuit them right over to the computer that's right there at her station and have them do the online permitting right then and there. So again, it's a learning curve that she will take them through, and as I said, we're also hoping to expand it into, specifically into solar collectors and see if we can get those permits done online as well.
Alderman Veccharelli.
Last year, I know you were reorganizing your department a little bit, maybe eliminating one position and then trying to pick up another. I believe that you eliminated a position, the Alderman, and you did not pick up the extra position. I see, you know, that the building inspector A, that you've put in your request, but the mayor and the finance board, we haven't gotten, haven't, haven't approved that. So I wanted to know, it was the idea that what you really needed was that other building inspector. What's your thoughts on this right now? Because I do see you lost two positions, really.
Yes.
I mean, one that we were trying to get, and the other one, hoping you were going to lose that one to get one. So could you just let me know how that's working out?
Again, we are making it work through, as I said, there are seasonal fluctuations. We're coming up to the busy season. We've got two licensed building officials that we will, as necessary, feed out plans to, to have them do the plan reviews. And so again, as the workload increases, building inspectors, our full-time building inspectors will be assigned to going out and doing the inspections in the field, and we'll be sending out plan reviews, essentially doing the desk work through our outside consultants.
So what you got right now seems to be working okay?
Yes. I think there would be some advantage to having a full-time building inspector on staff, and, but we're making it work right now.
Any more questions for the Director? Seeing none, we're going to move on to the next department, which would be the Department of Permitting, I'm sorry, the Zoning Board of Appeals, page 29, account number 4144.
I don't have a presentation for the ZBA, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Are there any questions for the Zoning Board of Appeals? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for the work you do for the city of Milford. The next account on the hearing schedule is account number 4123, Community Development, page 20.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. Last time I was here was about, I was here about six weeks when I did my budget, so I was a little nervous and clueless. This year, I'm a year in, still a little nervous, but not so clueless. We've had a great year. I kept the budget the same as it was last year, but we have done a lot of projects with the dollars that we have. And just to highlight a few, we forged some really great relationships with some of the business resources that the state has. For instance, the Connecticut PTAP now has an office at Parsons. SBDC is going to be starting office hours next month, twice a month, for businesses to come in and get some help on financial tools and marketing. We forged a great relationship. We're still working on is, is one of my biggest relationships to build would be with manufacturing. Last year, we did a great, last week, I'm sorry, we had a manufacturing tour with 13 manufacturers in Milford. We took them to Yukon's Additive Manufacturing and CCAT, which is a center for advanced technology. We've created an experiential learning committee with the Board of Education. We continue to work on a number of grants, and we have really gotten good at them, I have to say. Out of all the ones that we applied for in our office, we got turned down for one. So we have a few out right now through STEEP. We have a Kaboom Playground app we're working on, and an Electrical Vehicle Charging Station app that we'll submit next week, and we've received a number of grants in the millions this year. So it's been a really successful year. We have a lot more to do, but it's a great job. I love it, and if there's any questions, I'm happy to take them.
Any questions? Alderman Germin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, the Director. Can you just expand on the grants and what is, what has actually come through and what's in the pipeline?
Sure. So we created a grants committee. I don't know how many of you have actually done grants, but when you first take one on, it's a little scary, so people just decide not to do them. So what we did was get all the departments together and just talk about a grant, go through a grant, go through the process, create boilerplate language that people can use. That's been really successful. As part of that, we created a grant portal, so everybody who does get grants can put all of that information on this portal, so any one of the department heads can go and use that information and apply for more grants. What we have out right now, I think last year, we got close to 20 million more in grants, but those, that's a large number, but I have to say, a lot of that was due to storm grants. So that was the chunk of the grants that we had. But we have a small budget, and we're a small city, so any dollars that we get makes our job easier, and we strive to do that every day. We have a STEEP grant out right now that my office and Recreation worked on to do improvements at Eisenhower. That's close to half a million dollars. We don't know about that one yet. We have a small Kaboom grant we're working on right now, so when the new playgrounds go up at the Y, we'll have a state of, state-of-the-art playground there. We have two Electrical Vehicle Charging Station grants going to DEEP on Tuesday, so hopefully we get those, and we'll be putting those at the library if we do get them. We received the TOD Planning Grant to work with the downtown parking and look at economic impact and the market assessment of the downtown area. And then we have a number of different departments that have, I mean, a list of grants, which I'd be happy to supply you with. For instance, my department and MAG and GIS are creating a social services map that is now kind of the envy of all the cities around us, so people can, at the libraries or anywhere, if they don't have access to internet, they can find social services that they need. It's a great tool, so we're proud of it.
Thank you.
Alderman Shaw.
Thank you, Chairman, through you. The social service app, can you just expand a little bit? Where would I go to look for that?
So it's still in the planning stages right now. We can show you a model. You could go, say, you're looking for social services, you go to the library, and the library might have pamphlets or things like that. This, the library can then put you down on the internet. You can use their services. You click on the link, which they'll have at the, they'll have at the library, and anywhere, let's say if you're looking for assistance with food, you click where you are at that point, and you can see in walking distance where you can go for food or where you can go for shelter if you need. It's kind of the 211 United Way on a map. It makes it more accessible for people who don't have access to tools that you and I do.
Any more questions from the board? Seeing none, we'll move on to department number 4155, Economic Development Commission, page 31.
It's $1, so I know there's probably going to be a lot of questions, but I'm ready.
I don't see any questions, but I want to thank you, Julie, for the tremendous job you're doing for the city.
Thank you, Chairman.
Yeah, rest.
Good night.
Moving on to the next department on our hearing schedule, Department 4610, Health Department, page 79.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and the rest of the board. Tonight is my first time here as Director, but I have been here a few times before, so thank you for having me. What is going around right now, in my first, I guess it's been four months in the position, what I've learned is that there are many people who don't fully understand all the services that the Health Department provides. And in a way, that's good, because in public health, we always say, "If we're doing our job well, you'll never know that we're here." But on the other hand, I wanted to make sure that people are really aware of all that we do. So this handout is my attempt at covering a lot of things in a few pieces of paper. So the first one is kind of an overview of the Health Department as a whole. We pretty much have four major divisions. It's the School Health, Public Health Nursing Division, the Environmental Health Division, Community Health, and then Emergency Preparedness. Within our school slash public health nursing, that is comprised of all of our school nurses that are each, at each of the schools. We also do immunization clinics for the community on the second Tuesday of every month, as well as our flu clinics, et cetera. We also have dental hygienists, that, two dental hygienists that work through that division. So they do oral health exams in the elementary schools. So that's pretty much our school Public Health Nursing Division. We have our Community Health Division, which really looks at communicable disease in the community, so any reports that we get of any communicable disease, from tuberculosis to sexually transmitted diseases to influenza, we get those. We follow up with the providers, with the patients, to make sure that people are being treated appropriately. That also includes foodborne illnesses, so we often get calls from the community, people who have eaten at certain establishments have gotten sick, and we do investigations for that. Under Community Health is also several of our grant programs. We have a history of writing and obtaining several grants in various programmatic areas, anywhere from a regional asthma program to our Parent Leadership Training Institute, our Healthy Homes Program, and then our Emergency Preparedness Division is actually fully funded through grant funding that we receive through the state of Connecticut. So then, last but not least, we have our Environmental Health Division. Our Environmental Health Division does a lot of things, and I couldn't appropriately capture it on a quarter of this page. So that is my second page, which is this chart of everything that environmental health does. I tried to really divide this into what the responsibility is, the activities, and especially the community impact. What environmental health does really impacts everything from the things that people eat and drink, the air they breathe, it just encompasses everything. So food protection services, which is pretty much what people most commonly associate the Health Department with, is inspections at restaurants and hotels and that sort of thing. But in addition to that, we do plan reviews for new establishments, education and training for food workers, temporary events. So we're right now heading into our busy season, the Food Truck Festival a couple of weekends ago, the Peace, Love &amp; Music Event this, this weekend, and many more every weekend through Labor Day, pretty much. We also, they also get involved with our Emergency Preparedness and Disaster Response. Our Environmental Health Team is really our logistics team, so when you see that the city sets up a warming center or an evacuation shelter, our environmental health staff is responsible for setting up those centers and shelters to ensure they're ready for when the community arrives. Our public beaches, pools, recreational waters, they do inspections. From Memorial Day to Labor Day, we do weekly sampling at all of the beaches in Milford, and we go back and resample if we need to, if the counts are high, or if there's a storm, or if we see anything that we need to revisit. Environmental health hazards, we investigate essentially every complaint that comes through our office, we investigate. Vector control involves our mosquito control program, as well as things like bedbugs, ticks. We do a variety of things. We do tick testing and identification, where the community is able to come into our office and bring in ticks that they may have found on their body or on their family's body, and we send them out for testing and let them know if they come back positive. And then we have our Housing Code Enforcement, which is complaints regarding housing issues. We issue orders on that, Healthy Homes assessments, and then our troubled housing and hoarding cases. Some of you may be familiar with CRIDE, which is the Collaborative for Residential Integrity for the Disabled and Elderly. That is a group that meets on a monthly basis in Milford. It's headed up by the Health Department, and representatives from various nonprofit agencies, city agencies, and private agencies meet to talk about troubled housing issues in the city, hoarding cases that we're working on, and we try to come up with some solutions to address those, those issues in a comprehensive manner. Anti-blite code enforcement, the anti-blite ordinance came into effect in 2009, and the Health Department took that on. So that is a very active and robust part of what we do. And then we also look at septic systems and private wells in homes when people are installing a septic system, hotels, motels, massage establishments, schools, daycare centers, we, we do it all. So I just wanted to give you that overview as well. The final two pages that you have in front of you are maps. Just to give you an idea, what I've also found is that sometimes people tend to assume that certain areas of the community have all the issues, and what you can see is from the map, the first one are environmental complaints that are not blight that we've received, and they're pretty much spread out throughout, throughout Milford, so gives you an idea of where these things are. And then the final one is our blight complaint locations. The, the black dots are all of the blight complaints, and then the red ones are... BLIT complaints, and then the red ones are complaints that we have confirmed upon investigation. So I, this is just really a quick overview, but our goal at the Health Department is to put something together and potentially have a little open house of sorts, and invite you all to come and learn a little bit more about what we do. So hopefully, you'll all join us for that when, when we set it up. So now, just moving on to just a quick overview of our budget, 4610. They're just a few items that I wanted to point out that are the major changes. In the wages account, you'll notice that that has decreased due to the elimination of the Deputy Director position. And then the other change in the wages is that we currently have a Director of Nursing that works a 10-month position. So that position has been included to go to a 12-month position. Then in Seasonal Temporary, 4117, you'll notice an increase there, and that is really in discussions with the mayor, and looking at how to continue the work that the Deputy Director was doing. The discussion that we had was to add a 19-hour-a-week, part-time position, as well as bringing that Director of Nursing back up to a 12-month position, in the hope that those two things would be able to fill the gap that we would have. And then finally, in 4189, Miscellaneous Professional Fees, you'll see an increase, and that is related to the Community School Medical Advisor, Dr. Carlson, who I think was introduced to the board a few months ago. So that is what that accounts for. So I will entertain any questions.
Alderman Anderson.
Good evening.
Hi.
First of all, congratulations on your position.
Thank you.
You've had a really marvelous performance early on, so congratulations.
Thank you.
I wondered if you might share with us the nature of the grants that the department has received in the last year, and which areas you're pursuing. I know that in the past, Doc has talked about those grants that have a regional impact, and I wondered if you might detail that for us. And I might add also that I'm very appreciative of what the department has done relative to the quarry site on Boston Post Road. And there are a number of senior residents that live on Forest Road with respiratory problems, and your department has been very, very responsive. So thank you for that.
Thank you very much. As to our grant funding over the past year, there are two areas where the Milford Health Department is the lead Health Department within our region, and their regional grants. One, I mentioned, was our asthma grant. That is a home assessment grant, where we go in people who, whose asthma is uncontrolled, or where they're going to the emergency department a lot for exacerbations. We go and do a home visit with an environmental specialist, as well as a registered nurse, and review their medication, any environmental triggers that might occur in the home, and we provide basically low-tech solutions that help minimize their asthma. And we've seen really, really great outcomes across the region for that program. The second area where we are the regional lead, we used to have significant funding related to this, is Emergency Preparedness. We still continue to be the lead Health Department in the region, and I serve as the Emergency Support Function 8 Health and Medical Co-Chair right now. And we are getting some additional funding for that as well, focused on the area of Public Health Emergency Preparedness within Demis Region 2, which covers about 30 municipalities. In addition, so those are our regional grants. And then we have a lot of other local grants, which are funded through, primarily through the state Department of Public Health, our Healthy Homes Grant, our Parent Leadership Training Institute, which we've had for probably about six years. This is our sixth graduating class that is in the process of the institute right now. So we get funding for that as well, and a few other grants. But in terms of goals moving forward, one of my major goals is that health departments across the country are moving towards national accreditation, which is essentially kind of like the good housekeeping seal of approval for public health. So my goal is to pursue that, because I anticipate in the future that funding opportunities may be tied to accreditation. So I will be looking for some grant funding to help support that process.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
Alderman Gurman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Threyu, to the Director. Thank you for the thorough presentation. On the School/Public Health Nursing, the 50,000 visits, is that all within schools?
Yes, those are strictly Health Office visits, so visits to the school nurse's office.
Those are kids in school?
Those are kids in school, students in school who are going to the nurses for a variety of issues. And now, what we're seeing, it's not, your school nurse isn't handling the typical, I have a cut, I have a scrape, you know, I have a headache, et cetera. But there are lots of complex issues included in that, is, you know, students that have tube feedings, students that need a nebulizer for asthma care. It could be a variety of issues, and we are definitely seeing mental health issues being addressed in the school nurse's office. So it's a variety of issues encompassed in that 50,000 visits.
And just to follow up, are, do people come into the office downtown as well? I mean, walk-ins or?
Absolutely. Our, our office is busy, and our counter is very, very busy with lots of things, everything from plan reviews for restaurants, but also people coming in looking for services, maybe for our clinic, looking for referrals for services for personal health care, as well as for social service referrals. So we have a busy office downtown, definitely.
Thank you.
Alderman Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Ms. Joseph. I want to make mention, this is your first time in representing the Health Department for us, and usually it comes with a delegation, but I know you were always part of that panel every year. And it seemed to me that you have a lot of the practical background in this, and I really appreciate the summary of all of the many services the Health Department provides. A lot of people aren't aware of how wide and varied your responsibilities and the services you provide to the city are. Which brings me to my question here. The salary of the Director was brought forward as it would be under contract, but it was listed, which was then sent to the mayor to reduce, or the mayor recommended 115,000, which was, this is your position, and am I correct in saying, the position that has been vacated is Deputy Director, that was you, right?
Correct.
Okay. So you're no longer doing that, yet you are the Director of the Health Department. And let me just, I'm speculating here, because you're not an MD, maybe it wasn't considered to be at the same pay grade that an MD that sometimes holds this position. I don't know always, but sometimes. I don't know that it was always considered essential, but obviously, that is the answer to that question. You, however, are not working with the benefit of having a Deputy Director. You're doing that job, as well as the new position that you assumed from Dr. McBride since last year. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And you seem to be able, this is a very labor-intensive department. There's a lot of education, there's a lot of oversight, it's mainly salaries and so forth, but a lot of very specific and focused expertise that you have to bring to that job. Again, I commend you on the fine job you've been doing for the, and the job that the department does. But that is the explanation of why we have a lesser salary for the Director, is because you've taken over, but you have also assumed, you don't have the benefit of having an assistant, or a Deputy Director, as Dr. McBride did.
Correct. As you, as you mentioned, in previous years, there's usually a delegation of three or four. I am representing three out of that four right now. And our Board Chair is away on an emergency, so she couldn't be here tonight. But yeah, I have assumed many of those responsibilities. My hope is that I'll be able to delegate some of the deputy responsibilities to the Director of Nursing when she goes to a 12-month position, as the deputy kind of assumed many of the administrative duties related to the nursing director when it shifted to the 10-month position. So the goal is to shift those duties back to the Director of Nursing, and then hopefully, shift duties to the part-timer, and then take on the rest.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Alderman Genitazio.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, Threyu, to Ms. Joseph. You mentioned Dr. Carlson's stipend in your deliberation under the budgeted positions. I don't see it listed. I was under the understanding that that was being paid out of the Board of Ed budget. Is that accurate?
It's actually listed under 4189, Miscellaneous Professional Fees, as it's a contracted position, so it's, it's more of a stipend. And the other question, it is, it is being shared with the Milford Public School System as well, but not fully taken on by the school system. It's a shared position, because Dr. Carlson, though he serves as the School Medical Advisor, he also is the Community Medical Advisor. So when there are public health issues that are medical in nature, we will consult with him specifically for issues of communicable disease, emerging infections, et cetera, as well as when we have immunization clinics. He is the one that signs off on the standing orders that allows us to immunize people. So it's, it's a dual responsibility.
And I was under the impression that that was a $15,000 stipend overall. So how much of it comes out of your department? Is it 7,500?
Correct.
Mr. Chair, you are absolutely correct. It's a $15,000 stipended position. At the end of the year, the Board of Ed has agreed to reimburse the city for 50% of that cost.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alderman Stanford.
As a liaison to the Health Department, I want to congratulate you on your position, and also thank you for the fantastic job you've been doing, and will continue to do. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Any more questions pertaining to the Health Department? Seeing none, we're going to move on to Department 4821, Health Services VNA, page 91.
I don't have a presentation, but I will take any questions that you have. Mr. Quinn couldn't be here today, but...
Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hi, Deepa. I also serve on the commission, the Health Commission, and you're doing a great job, and it's a pleasant variation of situations. On the Health Services VNA, does that represent visits only, or is that salary? And if it represents visits, how many visits does it entail for the Milford community?
So this does not represent visits by the Visiting Nurses Association. Historically, this funding has been utilized for our Well Child Clinics that we hold at the Health Department. On the second Tuesday of every month, in the morning, we provide Well Child Clinics that are staffed by the Visiting Nurses Association. And it also, in the past year, or last year, we also were working with the Visiting Nurses Association on a program called the First Visit Program, which was a home visiting program for new parents who had children, and there were one to three nursing visits that were associated with that. That program was not very successful, and we were not getting a lot of referrals. So the reduction that you see is primarily due to, to that. And so the remainder covers the cost of our Well Child Clinics that we hold every month.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Threyu to Alderman Vitale. For clarification, though, the VNA does do visits in the city of Milford. They're specifically elderly visits. It's paid through Medicare, not necessarily through this grant, but the VNA has a very active presence here in Milford.
Right. And United Way does grant VNA also for visits with Beth El, et cetera. So, thank you.
Alderman Anderson. Oh, that must have been your high sign. Any more questions regarding the Health Services VNA? Alderman Genitazio.
Mr. Chairman, Threyu, if it's appropriate, I do have another question in regards to the Health Department for the miscellaneous professional fees that the mayor mentioned. I see that the department requested 19,600, but then the mayor recommends 34,600, and I'd just like to know what the additional fee is for.
That's the increase, given the $15,000 stipend for our Community and Health Medical Advisor. So that $15,000 represents his stipend, which previously never existed. And you see a reduction in several of the other salary items. There's approximately $70,000 less in salary total than there was previously. But that represents the $15,000 stipend for the, the Community and School Medical Advisor.
And like you mentioned, the 7,500 will be reimbursed?
Will be reimbursed to the city at the end of the year.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions regarding the Health Services? Seeing none, we'll move on to account number 4998, Education/Health Services, School Nurses, on page 95.
So what you'll see for, for this account is, everything has essentially remained the same. As I mentioned, our, we have a school nurse in every school. They do a tremendous job, especially in, at this time, where there are so many complex medical issues that they are dealing with, and students with health concerns, and as well as mental health issues, and, and all of that. So they do a phenomenal job, and we do count on them to work at our immunization clinics. They assist with public health emergencies as well. So they really, really do a really great job. So if you have any questions regarding the account.
Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Ms. Chair, Threyu. Deepa, a few years back, there was discussion on a centralized health clinic situation in the high schools, in one of the high schools. Whatever happened to that? Did that just go by the boards, or was not deemed feasible? Or can you enlighten us?
Sure. There was a lot of conversation regarding a school-based health center. I believe that's what you're referring to. So we did some research on it, and we were looking for some grant funding. It's not an idea that we have dismissed. At the time, years ago, things just didn't come together for it to happen, and there were some concerns regarding finding space, et cetera. But it's not really a thing that takes a lot of space. But we are, that's another area that I'd like to pursue some grant funding in. With the Affordable Care Act, actually, there is some funding towards school-based health centers. But I'm keeping my eye out on that, as well as on legislation related to that, and we'll see where that goes. But they have opened up a school-based health center at Platt. They just opened it up probably two months ago. So it seems to be getting good feedback, and people are utilizing it, so...
Thank you.
I just want to say, Ms. Joseph, we want to thank you for the fantastic summary you presented us, and also your presentation tonight. And congratulations myself to you for the job you've been doing. You've been in there a very short time, and you're doing a fantastic job of it.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Alderman Gurman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Threyu. You said there's a lot more complicated issues in the, in the schools, illnesses, or whatever, mental, physical. Is there additional training for all that, or the, or the nurses pretty much been through all that?
The nurses are able to go... The nurses are able to go to, they do go to trainings every year. We, because, you know, our training budget is not necessarily very large, so we, we do a rotation for, for many of them, where we try to get at least a few of them to trainings each year. And then they have professional development days when the school system has a half-day. We, we do professional development at the office, and we bring in speakers from the outside on different topics that they may be dealing with. So we try to ensure that they are trained and up to date. And it has been great having Dr. Carlson around. He is very up to speed and knowledgeable about the latest things that are happening and things that are coming out in journals. So he's been a tremendous asset to the nurses as well, in making sure they stay updated.
Great. And thanks for your presentation.
Thank you.
Beautiful. Any more questions pertaining to Educational Health Services? Seeing none, thanks again for your service to the city, and for our fine citizens. Our next and last account for our hearing scheduled this evening is number 4111, Board of Alderman, page 14. Alderman Vitale.
Mr. Chair, thank you, Mr. Chair. To the Chair, what is the $400 in postage, or $200 in postage? Do we send out stuff?
If, if I have to do a mailing for the Board of Alderman, when the mail clerk comes in, I know, let her know that it's going out on behalf of the Board of Alderman? But it's very rare. It's just when there's mail for the chairman. But right now, we can just scan anything that comes in, and I send it to them, and then I just give them the original when it comes in, so.
Does that money return to the general fund?
That you can direct to Mr. Mayor. If I believe in it.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, yes. Anything unspent is automatically returned to the general fund.
Thank you, Peter. Did that answer all your questions, Alderman Vitale? Yes. We could use that $200 later on, you know, at the end of the year. You can have a little Alderman party or something. Any more questions on the last account for this evening? Board of Alderman account? Seeing none, do I have here a motion to recess?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor?
Aye.
Are we, next meeting's going to be Monday, April 29th. Seven o'clock. Thank you very much.